Well, I'd just say good afternoon to all of you and welcome to the city council meeting. We asked that at this time, if you have your cell phone, would you be kind enough to put them on silence or turn them off? At this particular time, we're going to ask that Councilman Butch would lead us in prayer and Councilman Nicholson will lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for bringing us all together to serve the city of Shreveport better. Dear Lord, give us wisdom as we make decisions that we're doing the best that we can do. And please protect our firefighters and police officers that put their lives on their line every day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Let's face the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Men of the clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taylor, present. Councilwoman Taylor, Councilman Nicholson.
President. Here.
Councilman Jackson, Councilman Green.
I'm here. Thank you. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference, special meeting, Monday, June 27, 2022, and the city council meeting Tuesday, June 28, 2022. Does any council member have awards recognition to distinguish guests not to exceed 15 minutes? Thank you. Ms. James, do you have any comments from the mayor at this particular time?
No, sir.
Will you all have any awards of recognition tomorrow?
I don't believe there'll be any tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Does any member have any questions relative to property standards for Mr. Green at this Screen's seen there's none. Have rest of the day on.
All right, thank you.
Would there be a revenue collection plan implementation report tomorrow, finance?
Yes, sir, it will.
Thank you. Ms. James, would there be any legislation added tomorrow?
No.
Thank you. Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items and also items that's on the agenda. You will be asked to speak for three minutes. And then the executive performance tomorrow will consider agenda legislation. We have today Mr. Ken Krep. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, mayor. Ken Krep, 157 Archer Avenue, Shreveport 71105. This is somewhat repetitious. Some of it goes back many years, decades, some is fairly recent. Storm and disaster sirens. Next time y'all have a public safety committee meeting, I guess that would be the appropriate council committee on which to hear this. They save lives. Y'all have heard me say 20 dead at Albert Pike State Park in Arkansas, 611, 10, no sirens. Nobody dead at Guadalupe River in Texas, sirens. As far as I can tell, we've spent about $14.6 billion since I moved here in '78 with the new form of government. Not a dime of that 14-plus billion on storm sirens, disasters, toxic rail. You gotta blast people. You know, we do this in Benton, Homer, Spring Hill, Menden, Haynesville, not in Shreveburg. So let's talk about that seriously when some public safety committee meets or whichever appropriate committee. City charter review, I've been mentioning this for many years. Let's look at this maybe next year after the elections. We haven't done it. Let's put a provision in to do it every four years or every eight years. The parish commission does it every four years by their charter. We do it seldom. Some substantive changes, a lot of technical changes. Number three, pay raise for the mayor and the city council. Ordinance 60 and 61 with council members Nicholson and Butcher and then others, the chair and others. Let's do this after a raise for the city with the 13% went through six months ago. Y'all won't get this unless maybe in 2026, Levett or Tabitha is elected mayor and then she would get the $3,000 a week I have proposed. It's probably too late for the ordinance for the next council and mayor, but the one after the next, it's not too late. You've got four years in which to do it. Let's get it done. And as I mentioned to Mr. Nicholson, I'm just concerned, maybe y'all can extend the neighborhood associations period during which they have to get their 2022 NIP programs done. Ours is going to take nine months and it's July and we don't have a contract. We've always had them in March or April. One year, we got it in May, which was the latest, but we've broken that record in a negative sense because now it's July and we don't have a contract. And I don't know why. And I just want to thank the good Lord when I wake up, I like numbers and I thought about 27,200 and then I realized that's how many days I've been blessed to walk on this earth. Well, not as a baby, but to be on this earth.
Mr. Krep, Mr. Krep, when did you apply for your NIP?
Pardon?
When did you apply for NIP? Your NIP grant?
Yeah, the Neighborhood Improvement Program.
I say, when did you apply?
Well, that's a good program, which I first recommended in '82 and it took, you know, all of a sudden, 21 years later, we got it. It was approved by this council, July 8 of '03. And we just need a contract. And my understanding, and I haven't talked to more than three, but the other neighborhood association folks, they want their contracts so they can execute their plan too. Something is delaying it. I just don't know the reason for such a long delay.
Mr. Krep, I did have a conversation with Ms. Bonnie Moore after you contacted me about the delay in the NIP grants.
Well, let me know.
Apparently, there was a budget amendment necessary to move the funds where they needed to be so that those contracts could go through purchasing. And that budget amendment, I believe, is on the agenda.
Okay, well, I am hopeful we can, we might be able to get it done during the allotted time, which I think the current deadline is January 31 of '23, but some associations might need a couple of months extra to finish their projects due to the late start.
Thank you.
Mr. Krep, also, I'm going to have a public safety committee meeting and already had that to be put on the agenda. So I'll let you know, it'll be some probably.
Public safety?
Yeah.
Is that the appropriate committee?
I think it probably is.
Sort of, I mean, tornadoes.
Yeah, I think that's probably.
Toxic rail.
The only question I would have is if that's not more of a parish-wide deal or a city deal, but we can discuss it.
And funding should be there if we do this. I mean, the sales tax is up, you know, double digits and we should be able to a two-and-a-half-mile radius siren, which covers about 15 square miles. It's about $30,000 and you could cover the entire city with $300,000 with 10 sirens and you could overlap.
We'll discuss it in the safety meeting, but there will be one coming up.
I hope so, because it's been a little while since we had one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for listening and 7-Eleven, you might feel lucky and throw the dice tonight.
Thank you. This time, we have Liz Swain. Liz, you have two of them.
Would you like me to address both at the same time? Would that be easier?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Liz Swain, 416 Cotton Street in downtown Shreveport. Welcome to downtown. The first I would like to address with you is Resolution 90 that has to do with physical separation. I was talking this weekend to one of the Toops family members of Thrifty Liquor and he mentioned to me that in the conversation that will be had today and tomorrow, that he was concerned that perhaps the community was not aware of the community involvement that the family has been part of for so many years, their dedication to the city of Shreveport, the things that they have done to make Shreveport a better place. And I said, let me talk to the council about the most recent community support that they have shown. And that was when Mr. Roland Toops donated three downtown buildings to my nonprofit, the Downtown Shreveport Development Corporation. The Rubenstein and Lanford, the department stores, very historic, and the 500 Block of Mylum. Probably many of you know that recently they were sold to a gentleman who's going to convert them into apartments, into Airbnb and into lovely commercial space, bringing those buildings back to life. The other building is the old Dees Photo Building, right at the corner of Market Street and Texas Street. Those buildings had all sat vacant for a number of years. Mr. Toops had tried to get them sold, get them back into commerce, but when it turned out that that was just not going to be feasible for him, he made the decision to donate those properties to DSDC and for that, we are very grateful. Those properties are now going to become vibrant, exciting, tax-paying citizens again in the city of Shreveport. So I did want to share with you my personal experience with their community support and their attempts to assist the city of Shreveport become a better place. So thank you for listening to that. The other item that I definitely wanted to share with you today is tomorrow, there's going to be a public hearing on two restoration tax abatements, and this is Resolution 91 and 92. And it has to do with three buildings in the heart of downtown, the 600 Block, the lofts at 624, the old Sears Department Store, and the two buildings adjacent. Those buildings have become the heart, almost the living room of downtown Shreveport. People live there, more than 50 people live there. There are 18 businesses now in those three buildings that were not there before those buildings were rehabbed. Every developer in downtown who develops a historic property has the ability to ask for the RTA. And that is basically, after you rehab your building, you keep it at pre-property tax levels of pre-construction or pre-rehabilitation. So it keeps your property tax low for five years to give you the opportunity to start making some money on those buildings, to fill them with people living there, to fill them with businesses. And we support that 100%. What the owners are asking for, the new owners who just bought these buildings in January, they are asking for the city council to approve a transfer of the three years, the final three years, on the five-year restoration tax abatement to them. That still keeps it the first five-year tax abatement. They are simply asking for that tax abatement to be allowed to continue for three years. So we support that 100%. They have created all kinds of opportunities downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz, I appreciate your remarks about the Toops family. I've known Tracy for 25 years, we're friends, and I appreciate that friendship, but I wonder if you have an opinion concerning the merits of the legislation, ordinance 90.
You know, this is not a legislation that my board has taken up. It's not one that we really have focused on, quite honestly, until just several days ago. The separation obviously has pros, as all ordinances do, and potentially some cons to it as well. I will say the one thing that I personally am concerned about, if it is correct, because I've not done a lot of investigating on my own, is does this open every potential retail or mercantile to be able to sell liquor? And that is a question that I would love to hear the answer to. If you take that physical separation requirement out, for certain stores, does it take it out for all stores? In other words, does every Family Dollar, does every Dollar General, does every CVS, Walgreens, are they then able to sell liquor? There are neighborhoods that may not want additional liquor sales in their neighborhood, so would they have the means or the method by which to stop it if that physical separation is removed? So that was just one of the things that I was thinking about when I was reading over this, but again, I really have no pro or con opinion, just concern and interest.
Thank you.
And I do have those answers to those questions, but I'll let the professionals answer those questions.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This time, I believe, Ron Leepo. Sure, would you be kind enough to state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
I can hear you, but barely, so if you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better, thank you. I don't think the problem's your microphone, I think the problem's I'm getting old.
Okay. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Ron Leepo, 1132 Erie Street.
Thank you, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I have two issues. Do you want me to do both of them while I'm up here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the first one is the retail hours for on-premise licenses. And I think my understanding is that the downtown district hours started because of the casinos and the difficulties they had in competing, because the casinos were open so the downtown bars needed, wanted to be able to compete. And I think that caused an unfair situation for the rest of the city of Shreveport. And it seems to me that it ought to be a level playing field for all. I've been in the liquor business now for 40 years in wholesale, retail, and on-premise, and it seems to me that the best solution is to pick a time for everybody to be shut down or let them be open, but make it the same. It's a bad situation when you have bars in other parts of the city close and then that huge swath of customers all heads downtown away from their homes and end up with longer drives home afterwards, and it's a non-competitive situation, which I think is bad. And do I get another three minutes for the second one or am I stuck in the first three? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. The next one is a separate entrance. We had this conversation in 2019 when I was active in the business. I'm retired now and been in for a couple of years. One of the concerns, I think, at least one of the councilmen who's not here anymore, was concerned that I was interested in it for my own business. It wasn't true then and it's certainly not true now, I don't have one. And my concern with separate entrance is that when you open that up, you have liquor in large grocery stores where minors are allowed to be in, and it's a very difficult situation to control. Locally-owned and liquor-only stores, that's the primary business for them, do a much better job of defending the territory. If you talk to any chain store managers, you'll find, few exceptions, they have some security guards every once in a while, but usually they don't. And if an 18-year-old walks in there and fills his basket up with a few bottles of liquor and just walks out the door with them, their instructions are, ask them, their instructions are to let them go. You don't do anything about it. A liquor store's not going to let that happen. And I know that part of the reason here, part of the concern, is there are a couple of stores or a few stores that are smaller, that are independently owned, that probably can manage it and want to be able to sell steaks or milk or whatever. You know, there's a couple of possible solutions to that. They probably can manage it fine, so they've got to be 21 to come in. They got liquor. If you're going to have liquor, it's not like wine, it's not like beer. Liquor is heavily intoxicating with very little consumption. Have a liquor license and make them be 21 to come in is one of the solutions.
This time.
This cannot be undone.
This time.
Okay, this cannot be undone. Don't make the mistake.
Tim Huck, 415 Spring Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. My concern is with legislation that's going to be proposed today, actually, for the first reading, that is going to retract the hours from downtown Shreveport to 2:00 a.m. I read over it. One is it isolates the CMU but doesn't, for the entertainment district. Downtown Shreveport was given the extra hours for multiple reasons. One had to do with casinos. It had to do with some shift work. Then we also had to do with some parking issues, and then it was to revive downtown Shreveport, which it worked really, really, really well. We had a downtown Shreveport police unit and we've had 27 years now of 6:00 a.m. And not 100% positive, but I don't think you probably have many noise complaints coming from downtown Shreveport. We do have some fights and some other minor issues, but if you look at the stats, I believe Area 1, which is downtown, is the safest district in Shreveport, Louisiana. The chief would probably have to verify that, but last time I looked at the numbers, that's what it showed. And so when you start mixing downtown in with the rest of the city, we're not the rest of the city. We don't have our own parking lots. You know, when people get up and say, well, it's an unfair advantage, most of the people who get up and say it's an unfair advantage opened their establishments while the closing time was 2:00 a.m. and they still chose the area that they chose instead of coming downtown. The reason they chose it is because that's the customer base they were going after, that's the area they wanted to be in, that's the building they wanted. But we have a lot of buildings in downtown Shreveport that are currently vacant, that are readily available to rent, and that are already designed and set up to be nightclubs or bars. And so there's plenty of area down there and Shreveport would, I think, all the establishments in downtown would welcome new establishments. And that's really all I have. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tracy Toops of 451 Rails Backstreet, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. Thank you, Chairman Green and members of the council for hearing me today. Just wanted to bring up a couple of bright points in regards to ordinance 90 regarding the Chapter 10 change. First of all, this ordinance does not support existing local businesses. It will not increase employment or sales tax dollars. The privilege of operating a package and wine-spirit business requires hands-on management, of which we have over 60 years of doing. We run our own security detail and require very little from the Shreveport Police Department. This ordinance will burden the Shreveport Police Department more so than it already is. This ordinance changed, ordinance changed, that is. Petty theft is, as far as what we see, not responded to the way it used to be. They may take a report on it, but no one's going to come out and necessarily view video cameras that we have in the store to try to figure out who did what and get to the bottom of it. This can be managed by a locally-owned business such as ours. It is not going to be managed by a national chain. It will lead to increased exposure to minors, underage drinkers, through marketing such as flavored spirits. They are constantly trying to market various flavors such as candy cane or whatever the flavor may be, and that's not something that you want to try to have exposed in front of minors. Possible purchase of alcohol by minors and/or possible theft by minors. Hiring good employees in which we do all of our own hiring is more difficult than it has ever been, and putting the responsibility of monitoring sales to minors or over-served people will not be done properly in a national chain environment. We will be forced, as a company, to have layoffs and cut pay where this ordinance to be changed. Sales tax collection from our company from the beginning of 2020 through May of this year, 2022, has been approximately $4.5 million. As local owners, we reinvest in the city and make charitable contributions to our community. Shreveport is in line with the common sense laws that every other state in the southeast region of the United States by not allowing liquor to be exposed to minors in stores such as grocery stores, et cetera. Some of these states include Texas, Arkansas, Georgia, and Florida, amongst many others that do not allow this type of exposure to minors. Thank you.
State your last name for me, I'm sorry.
Amadon 9401 Prestonwood, Shreveport, Louisiana, 711106. I'm here about the separate interest law as well. We currently serve beer, wine, spirits, daiquiris, and food, and we have for the past three years. Currently, Shreveport is the only one city in Louisiana that has this law. So all the other cities, small businesses still thriving, they have no issues with the alcohol in grocery stores, such as, they rope it off. And just to clarify on his point, the same thing as people being trained in his stores versus a grocery store, you start to have your ABO, you start to have your LRV to handle alcohol. And that's the training that goes on across the state. I know, I'm nervous. So small businesses such as us, quarts and cunts, have thrived in other cities without this law. The separate interest law states that you cannot have any other business but to operate under, we operate under one LLC. So I'm not really sure how that's another business. If you're selling chips, tobacco, check cashing, whatever it is, whether it's any account in this whole city, they're all breaking the law accordance to this. Just to let you know, really, for the last three years we've been open, we've financially grown over year over year. During COVID, we were a huge vital part of our community. We were able to bring in toilet paper, I mean, whatever anybody needed, we had it for them, and that's when people didn't want to go to the grocery stores and, you know, be exposed to everything. The other was like during the freeze, we were able to only close one day, just because it is small business and we were able to be there, and for everybody else that was closed, we were open for them. Just to date, we have no issues with city, state governments in getting license and permits. And just as you know, I mean, we've had state representative, county commissioners, council members, everybody has patroned our establishment and sees no reason why that can't be. Just to verify on Mr. Leepo, we already do have a liquor license and it is 21 and up to come in our establishment. Also, the thing I do want to point out is we don't know what accounts are going to get alcohol, I mean liquor. So we can't base this all on that, because when I was working with Glazier, Dollar Stores, Dollar Generals, everybody was open, and it took them years and years to even decide to get beer. And from then, we would pick up out-of-date beer all the time. And they did, they stated that they haven't had any issues when we, now this is when I was still at Glazier, that was five years ago, but they've still been selling it since. So if there was that big of issue with theft of alcohol, because you've got beers that are 9% now, I mean, that's just as much as drinking a shot of whiskey. I mean, you know, how can you really justify which is high alcohol and which is not? That's where you come in that craft brand. I mean, even in the grocery stores, they have wine, the margaritas, that are 19%. That's as much as Malibu Rum is only 21%. So why is that considered okay in a grocery store but not in a, you know, liquor store? So anyway, I just want to point those few things out. Of course, our business has been going well and we really appreciate it, but, you know, we're just ready for a change. So, you good?
Guy Lynn Aker, 2316 Capeless Lago Road, Bossier City, 71112. Good afternoon, Shreveport City Council. Let me start by saying that it's not the bars that are committing the crimes. Violent crimes are being committed every day. They're in the streets, they're in the churches, they're in our schools. They're out in the Brookshires parking lot at 2:00 in the afternoon. They're driving down I-20, people are getting shot at. So if you think that by cutting our operating hours, which is 2:00 a.m., right now, we shut down at 4:00 a.m. Most of the times, we close at around 2:00 a.m. because the market dictates that. But by shutting our hours, is that going to help the police and the downtown crime that's going on on a day-to-day basis? We've got a lot of people out here that shut down, that are being asked to shut down at 2:00 and then allow other businesses to operate till 6:00 a.m. Okay? I'm asking you, is cutting our hours and cutting our business hours going to decrease I'm just, I want y'all to help me understand this, because I'm not seeing. Why should we, be okay? Why should we be okay with the city to take money out of our pockets, the other bar owners that have to shut down early, and put it into our competitors' pockets? Just another question. I'm not opposed to shutting down at 2:00 a.m. at all, but I feel like everybody needs to shut down at 2:00 a.m., all of us. That'll help the police department, you know, help between 2:00 and 8:00 o'clock in the morning. What it does is it puts myself and other bar owners at a competitive disadvantage. Other cities close at 2:00 a.m., Dallas, Bossier, seems to be helping them. I'm just asking, I mean, at the end of the day, we're asking our patrons at 2:00 a.m. to say, we're shutting down at 2:00, but it's okay for you to get in the Uber, get in your cars, and drive downtown to go to their next watering hole. I find that a very, very competitive disadvantage, I do. When it's all said and done, our local patrons are nearby, they're at our local bars, and they're not far from home. We're asking them to drive further and put themselves in peril by leaving and going downtown and when everything should be shut down. If we're going to shut it down, let's shut it down at 2:00 a.m., okay? And I just, you know, I hope y'all please consider that tomorrow when this goes up, and I just want to thank you for your time today. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman? I'll just comment that I think the speaker's argument regarding a universal shutdown time for bars makes a lot of sense. Councilman Bowman has offered legislation that would address one part of town. Councilman Fuller tomorrow is introducing legislation that addresses downtown. My hope is that we'll shut down all bars at 2:00 a.m. I would hate to see us have a 2:00 a.m. musical chairs where people who are intoxicated move from one round of bars to another on a regular basis. That would not be in the city's interest. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Council.
Michael Levin?
Hello, my name is Michael Levin, 1298 Leonard Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71115. I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to us. I'm here to talk against the changing of the separation law for hard liquor sales. Currently, right now, stores, big box stores, other stores can sell hard liquor if they chose to have a separate entrance. The separate entrance is to keep minors and people like that from being exposed to the hard liquor, as you've heard already. Also, as we get rid of those law, that ordinance or change it to remove separation, you're going to allow every other store that sells anything like that to become a liquor store. The Dollar Stores will start selling liquor, the grocery stores will start selling liquor, the drugstores will start selling liquor. We saw that in Bossier when they changed the law. We also saw a decrease in sales, which forced a layoff of employees. If y'all change this separation law and allow everybody to sell hard liquor, you're going to have each and every one of you in your district are going to have people that are going to lose their jobs, not just with us, but the other locally-owned businesses, not the box stores. Box stores now are trying to get people to check themselves out. They're not hiring people, they're trying to get rid of payroll. They're not going to have the people up there to check the IDs, you're not going to have the people there to make sure somebody's not stealing off the shelves when they're putting, even if you put it behind a case, as the product's sitting on the floor waiting to be put on the shelves, minors have the ability to take it and go with it. And like Mr. Toop said earlier, if you ask any of these large stores, maybe with Mr. Leppo, they are told for insurance reasons, you do not chase a shoplifter. It will get out that you can go into the store and grab as much liquor as you want, and you're not going to get arrested, and you're not going to get charged. I'd ask that y'all consider for the city of Shreveport, for your constituents that you each represent, that you protect them and you protect local businesses and residents like that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we have no items on the consent agenda for introduction. Ms. James, would you please proceed with regular agenda legislation, please?
Resolution 91 stating that the city of Shreveport's approval of Studio Network Shreveport I LLC partial transfer of ownership to 624 Downtown Lofts LLC. Resolution 92 stating the city of Shreveport's approval of Studio Network Shreveport I LLC partial transfer of ownership to Las Palmas Group Lofts LLC. Resolution 97 authorizing the use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management. Resolution 98 authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject all bids received for requests for storage building at the SFD Fire Academy bid RFQ number 22-532.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, resolution 98 would have the council authorized rejecting a bid of approximately $10,000 for a building for the Shreveport Fire Department because the bidder has decided that it will not or cannot honor the bid it submitted. Ms. James, I'd like to understand between now and tomorrow's meeting why we would reject a bid to accommodate a bidder in that way. I mean, my appreciation is that when we have the bidding process, we expect the bidders who win to honor their bids, and that's so that reason for the legislation concerns me, picks my interest. Thank you.
Yeah, and Council, if you want, we could kind of speak to it now. It does not obligate them to perform the job after the bid. In this particular situation, the company used a third party to be able to price the cost of the building, and after re-contacting the company to gain the updated price after they won the bid, the cost went up. So after the cost went up, they couldn't give us the updated proposal, so our job at that point was to reject the bids and to resubmit to all bidders to have the opportunity to submit a bid. And so in that event, we are working with legal though to talk about, because we do feel that this could be an issue for other vendors to slow down the process for the purchasing department. So we're right now, we're working with legal to come up with some defenses to make sure that we run a smooth process and a timely process with our RFPs and our solicitations.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, a fixed bid process is not appropriate for all purchases the city makes, but it is appropriate for some, and I just want to make sure that everybody involved is on the same page. If we're receiving a bid that we expect to be honored, I don't want the city to be disadvantaged by a bidder who decides after it has won that it's not going to honor the bid it's submitted. It sounds like you're on top of the issue.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. James, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 26, 2022?
Resolution 99, accepting the public dedication of Resilient Way, Rights of Way and Resilient Technology Park Unit 1.
Any questions or comments? Ms. James, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to July 26, 2022?
Ordinance 92, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2022 Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance 93, amending the 2022 budget for the MPC Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 94, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 95, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 96, to amend Chapter 10, Division 2 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Hours of Operation for Alcohol. Ordinance 97, enacting Section 14-23 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances Relative to the Mandatory Sterilization of Dogs and Cats.
Are there any questions on any of these items? Yes, ma'am.
Our ordinance 97, is it's like the same that the parish already has?
Yes, Councilman Fuller, Commissioner Young reached out to me and explained that for the temporary through the end of 2024 effort that the commission has undertaken, we have to pass a law so that they can enforce sterilization within the city limits. And the, you know, the statistic that really jumps out at me is that every single year in Caddo Parish, more than 1,000 dogs and cats are euthanized. So if we can address that on the front end with sterilization, we can bring that number down. I'd certainly like to see that happen. Well, thank you.
Fuller's over here.
Ma'am?
You said Fuller, I'm over here.
Oh, I apologize. I did not mean to make that mistake.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. James, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final pass?
Ordinance 89, providing for the issuance of sale and sale of general obligation funds Series 2022 of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form of fixing the details and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the application of the proceeds thereof to the project. Ordinance 90, to amend Section 10-84 of Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Physical Separation of Sales of High Alcohol Content Liquor for Consumption Off the Premises. Ordinance 91, to amend Chapter 10, Article 4, Division 2, Section 10-175 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Hours of Operation for Retail Dealer of Alcohol None Downtown Zoning Districts.
Are there any questions on any of these items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ordinance number 90, I'd like to bring the police chief up and people from the division that oversee this have a few questions, and then I also want to bring up Mr. Clark from the MPC. I had no intentions of putting this up to even be considered. I, to be honest with you, I thought we were kind of rocking along. I've never asked the police department to not enforce a law, but for some reason, over the last three years, there's been a gap somewhere, and I was contacted by two businesses in my district that, especially one, that their liquor license was not going to be renewed due to the physical separation issues that's going on. I am probably the most pro-business, small business, one of those members on the council, and I want to protect all small businesses. This has absolutely nothing to do with Kroger or Brookshires or Albertsons or Walmart selling liquor. This, to me, is protecting small businesses. As I dug into this, when I got that call, I called the chief, and he confirmed that yes, and that there were several other stores in my district and throughout the city, probably every district that's up here, that are in non-compliance of this particular part of Chapter 10, and that it needed to be corrected, or that those stores would not be reissued their liquor license when the renewal came up. And that touches probably some of the people that spoke today, at least in particular stores that may not be grandfathered in. So as a council member that represents the entire city, I felt like it was time for us to revisit this. Unfortunately, I wanted to wait until the MPC, which has just completed a study, finished their study, which they have now, and we were going to discuss it in a public safety committee meeting. However, one of the businesses was not going to be reissued their license and have to close their door. I don't know how much more pro-business you can be than that, than fighting to keep local businesses open. So I would like to turn it over to the chief. I want your feelings on it. And then Corporal Glass Bradley, I'd like to hear from you as well, or whoever y'all want to talk.
Okay. As we move forward, without a doubt, we pay close attention and are doing our very best to enforce the laws, the ordinances that you, the council and the council before you have put for the city to follow, to force it, enforce it in its strictest sense. But it has become to a point where this particular ordinance is causing us difficulty because for the past six or seven years, for quite some time, this has been on our radar, and attempts have been made to try to get the ordinance looked at and to get it fixed, because it puts us in a position where some businesses are able to operate and some are not. The playing field did not appear to be an even playing field and making it difficult for us to enforce. But now that it's come down to the time where business licensing, liquor licensing will have to be renewed, we cannot, it's inappropriate for us to pose judgment and give someone a license if they are not in compliance with the ordinance. So that's the predicament that we in. Over the course of time, some have been grandfathered, but now it's time for license to be renewed, and I don't think it's appropriate for us to not enforce the laws that you ladies and gentlemen put on the book. So that's where we're at. And I've always asked the question, well, why is it there? To begin with, why are the restrictions there? Well, I don't know. Maybe Mr. Clark or someone else who has done some research over the course of time can tell me why. I'm quite sure back in the 80s, 90s, whenever the ordinance was done, there was good reason, rationale, why it is what it is, but I don't know what that is. And if I knew that, that, you know, would help us, helps to move forward. And I know from time to time, this law, as well as all the other laws and ordinances, need to be revisited to make sure that it is up to date and in our best interest for 2022, not necessarily 1990 or 94. So that's the position that we're in.
It's interesting, I had, I had the clerk pull the minutes, the verbatim minutes. We used to keep word for word, and it's interesting reading when it passed in 94. A lot was because they didn't want McCarty posters in grocery stores. I think was about the biggest thing that they came up with. Now, and this may be something for Corporal Glass Bradley to answer. Specifically, what are y'all looking at when you go to renew the license? What kind of commodities could the liquor stores that aren't grandfathered in, what could they be selling or services that they're offering that would make it to where you would not reissue their license?
So if you're a package store or a high-content liquor store, you're not to be doing check cashing, chips, sodas. The only sales that you're allowed to do with that ordinance established is liquor, high and low liquor. Anything else is a violation, period.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, I share Councilman Butcher's concern about shutting down small businesses like Quarts and Cuts, but I want to, and I also wish that the timing had not worked out such that we had to take action before Mr. Clark could bring his study to us. But I want to make sure that we talk about the full range of options. I mean, the concern that seems to motivate maintaining the status quo is preventing minors' access to liquor. We don't want young people going into stores where liquor is sold, and so we have this physical separation rule. What would be wrong with eliminating physical separation, but just having a requirement that you have to be 21 to go in the store if they're selling liquor? Does that solve the problem that we're talking about, at least in the interim, or does it not?
It does not.
How so?
Because it still has that, if you're making them a package store, that's the only thing that they can do, is sell alcohol.
But I mean, if we eliminate the physical separation requirement?
That entails that if you eliminate the physical separation, you're basically opening the option to, let's say you have a business and you have physical separation. The physical separation is just saying you can't do any other business unless you have a separate entrance to go in or out the door. So if you get rid of that and make it 21 and only, that would be just for high content. Because it's a, statewide is a Class B license, so that would be for your high content. So every, almost- So every, every, almost all other businesses, grocery stores, still have alcohol permits. It's just for that high content.
So, Councilman, it's okay. So you're, you're asking, and this, this question has been posed to me as well, could you put a, a requirement, we, we remove the physical separation, and I'm trying to just wrap my mind around this, remove the physical separation, but to enter a store that's selling hard liquor and other commodities, or cashing checks, or selling cigarettes, or selling potato chips, you have to be twenty-one to go in there? If, is that something that's possible to do?
Yes, if the main commodity is alcohol.
But if they're selling cashing checks or cutting steaks or, or whatever, that's, they could still operate and, and do that, the physical separation is removed. However, it requires eighteen-year-old, I mean, you have to be twenty-one to enter the store?
Yes.
Is that what you were asking, John?
Yes, I, I, I'll just say, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me to enforce a physical separation requirement in a store where you have to be twenty-one years old or older to go in. So for example, Cuban Liquor, which is grandfathered in, uh, at Piermont and Fairfield, they sell all kinds of stuff, right? I mean, they, uh, they sell cheese and, and...
Birthday gifts?
Birthday, I mean, birthday gift, cheese plates, uh, non-alcoholic drinks, but you have to be twenty-one to go in. And so we're not exposing children to alcohol with, with that situation. I just, I just wonder if we're going to make a change. I'm, I'm not proposing, I'm asking. Why couldn't the rule be, you don't have physical separation, but if you're selling high content alcohol in a space, then you got to be twenty-one to enter that space? I mean, I, I, is that a workable rule, I guess is what I'm putting on the table?
You're saying the space and not the store?
Well, well, I guess I'm saying like the, the store, like if you're gonna, you're gonna sell liquor in a non-segregated space or store, then you got to be twenty-one to go in?
So how do they do this in Bossier? So if we're the only city that's...
We're the only city in the nation that does physical separation.
Okay, so we're the only city that's doing this. Um, so when you go to Van Roodge or wherever else, what happens if they sell it, you know, hard liquor, whatever, in Walmart?
Most stores, if you just go to the next parish over, and you can just go into the store and it's right next to the mill.
Chair, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if that's completely consistent across the state because in certain states, all, like, every, maybe wine and beer available in a grocery store, but the harder stuff might be in state stores only. In Pennsylvania, it's state stores, in Oregon, I believe Washington, state, it's state stores. So you don't, you can't, you don't have a separation there, but you can't purchase that in any store that's not a state store. So that's not, we're not, we might not, we might be the only people that have this particular type of separation law, but we're not the only municipality or even state that has regulations on how...
Yes, now, we have dry counties that, like Greenwood, you can't even have alcohol as, as far as DeSoto as well. But far as a physical separation where you have to leave out of a business to go next door into a separate business to conduct alcohol, we are the only city.
Right.
I can go to Lafayette and, and go into the Circle K and get hard ac, hard liquor, hard alcohol, whatever you want to call it, and get high con, high content alcohol at the Circle K where I get a bag of chips, my gas, and get me something to drink also and leave, so. And it's just behind the account.
But what about the, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. What about the concern that some speakers today have suggested that large corporate stores like grocery stores and Walmart will not do as good a job preventing minors from purchasing or stealing, uh, liquor? I, I assume that you, you can address whether we have a bigger or a, or less significant problem with those large stores than with smaller ones?
I don't, do not disagree at all with a thing that they have said, uh, today concerning that. Kids seem to find a way to break the rules. It would not surprise me at all, and I certainly agree with what someone said today, that the level of security in larger stores probably would not be as good as the level of security and interest in, in smaller facilities. I don't disagree with, with that at all. I think they are exactly on point.
Chief, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Since we use, uh, Bossier sometime as our model, um, get fire trucks and stuff from them and all that.
Yes.
How, uh, how do they operate over there?
Have you did some research?
Yes.
I don't know.
They, they don't have the physical separation law that we have. They, you can go into a package store or grocery store and, yeah.
And so they, 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 you just, over there, you can just go in there and get it wherever it is?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clark, let me ask you a question.
Can I, can I ask one question to him just real quick?
Yes, sir.
Oh, in Caddo Parish, at the, at the Walmart on North Market, it's that way, is it not?
Uh, having...
I mean, do they, they don't have fiscal separation out? Mr. Clark might be able to answer that better, but...
Yeah. They, they don't have it though, now, they might keep it under lock and key, but they don't have a, a ordinance in place where it's a separate business in, or entrance, or no other business.
Mr. Clark, the study that you're doing that would basically bring light into all of this, when would, when would your study be completed?
The, the study was submitted to the MPC board on last Wednesday, so it's being forwarded to council, so you should have it at your next meeting. But we're, we're studying liquor stores, uh, and, uh, you know, once we started studying liquor stores, the, the thought process of why do we have physical separation came into play, uh, and, and we did not do extensive research, but we got some research. It was our understanding that the purpose for physical separation was because the police department was concerned about, uh, individuals, uh, going into liquor stores, uh, uh, and coming out of liquor stores and, uh, uh, drinking liquor next to, and this is back in nineteen ninety-four, next to schools and, and churches. And so we came to the conclusion, our, our study is, is totally different, but over the years, we have had inquiries from grocery stores and so forth, and drugstores, where part of their, uh, business plan incorporated the sale of alcoholic beverages, high content. And they would become very discouraged when they would say, what is that law that y'all have over there that requires me to have to have a, a plate wall, I think it's six feet tall, and a separate entrance if we want to serve liquor? And we can go right across the bridge, and none of this stuff is, is required. All we could locate outside the city limits of Shreveport. Uh, so I was just listening, and it's been an educational experience for me today. I was listening to Councilman Butcher, uh, as far as being pro-business. Uh, the MPC has been accused of not being pro-business because the MPC has been accused of creating obstacles that, uh, that prevent businesses from operating to their fullest potential. And we have worked very diligently, uh, with the Unified Development Code to remove as many of these obstacles to encourage businesses to come to Shreveport because it's not more difficult, Councilman Green, to open up and do business in Shreveport than it is to do business and open up in Bossier. So it, it's been a real eye-opening experience for me because I had often wondered, and still do wonder, why do we have physical separation? And I'm quite familiar with state stores like Councilwoman Fuller is talking about, but why do we have physical separation in Shreveport? And we are the only city in the nation that does physical separation. And if it's that harmful and the, the, you know, the skyrocketing of, uh, youth, underage sales and underage getting involved, why no other city has realized that that's a problem and incorporate it? And we could be a model for someone that, and incorporate our model to prevent underage sales.
Now, I guess, Mr. Clark, I could answer, they say that, uh, Shreveport is the Bible Belt.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Clark raises another important component of the conversation, which is that, you know, some businesses that make economic sense, if they're allowed to sell liquor, don't pencil out if they're not. So for example, a CVS, and we've, we've had conversations over the years in this room about the fact that there are, are large parts of the city that are underserved, uh, by grocery stores and drugstores. And, uh, it, it's just a reality that if a CVS or Walgreens is allowed to sell liquor, the economics of placing a store, uh, you know, might look better than, than they do without the ability to sell that, that high margin commodity. And look, I mean, I, I, you know, I've learned, I've learned well that I've got one vote up here. I've learned it again and again over the past four years. Uh, if I could wave a wand for now, I probably would, uh, eliminate physical separation, but have a rule where you have to be twenty-one to go into a store that's selling liquor. And that would allow places like Courts and Cut to continue to operate, but wouldn't allow, uh, big box stores to sell liquor. The present rule doesn't make any sense to me because we, we're preventing adults who want to buy liquor from being exposed to potato chips. I mean, that's sort of how I see the, the current rule, making sure that when you go buy liquor, you don't have the opportunity to buy anything else. I don't know who that helps, and we, we need to make a change. Thank you.
By changing... By changing this, what do we open ourselves up to?
Now, you know, and, and I will always yield to, to enforcement. I think we open ourselves into opportunities to possibly get grocery stores encouraged to go into economically challenged neighborhoods because they, they're, these neighborhoods are generally food deserts where there's not fresh food, uh, there's not the opportunity to buy those type products. They're confined to the, the corner stores, the, the stores that, that have been around forever, but that does not, uh, incorporate, you know, fresh food and healthy food, uh, in physically challenged, uh, fiscally challenged neighborhoods. You know, you have all those health problems associated with the like of, uh, fresh foods and healthy foods, obesity, diabetes and so forth. We're thinking that, uh, possibly, because as you well know, Councilwoman Taylor, it is a very difficult challenge getting a grocery store to become interested and come into, uh, certain neighborhoods around our city. So, and we've heard those stories over the years, uh, that, you know, I'm not going to go through all of those hoops to get, uh, a grocery store open, uh, when I can go somewhere else, save money and get it done a lot quicker. So that, from our perspective, that's what you open the city up to by doing, and this is the possibilities of having opportunities to attract these grocers and so forth.
Thank you. Chief, let me ask you a question. How much leg would, would it take for you to investigate how Bossier is operating and what their statistics are? And how would we go about doing this investigation as to how other places are operating with a possible, uh, amendment that would, whatever store in Councilman Butcher's area that is about to close, if we don't do something tomorrow? Because I wouldn't be ready to vote tomorrow on this after I, I've heard all of what I've heard. How long would an investigation ask to you all finding out statistics as to how Bossier is operating? And they, they seem to be successful over there.
We could, we could find out about Bossier, I'm quite sure, prior to the, tomorrow's, uh, council meeting, but to go much past that, then obviously we need extra time to look around our state and other places.
And so what would happen, what has to happen for, uh, since it seems as though we are doing all of this for one store? What, what, what would you have to do in order to, you know, I don't want to be unfair to them, but it seems as though this is surrounded for one store, two stores? What would we have to do to allow them to remain open until we, as a body, can get a clear cut on what we ought to do, what is best for our city?
Would take the council just to, to vote to give them an extension on it, or what would it take to come from this body?
We would have to give an extension for you all.
Y'all can, you know, somebody can, uh, you know, offer something and y'all vote on it, and we can extend it for whatever time period you say.
What type of extension are we talking about?
Renewal?
A renewal.
For the renewal?
Mr. Chairman, um, I think that the, that it's not just these two stores, as these licenses start to, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, as these licenses start to renew, and they don't renew at the same time, more stores throughout the city are going to be impacted.
Not tomorrow. I mean, that within thirty days, right?
My, my question is this, and I, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all. My question is this, is there any way to, I mean, I hate the word grandfather, but can you, could you grandfather in the stores that are doing it right now and then move forward new legislation?
I'm not trying to grandfather them in. I'm just trying to get some time as to, we can get our city balanced as other cities are. And so that's my question, as to what is it that we need to do?
Mr. Latier?
That's why I'm looking at Danielle and Carlos, because I'm not sure at this time. I, I don't know what the timeframe is that we're talking about.
Like, so if, like you said, if another business comes in for a renewal and their license expires tomorrow, is, they will be denied or...
Well, what if, what if we did a, a moratorium on, say, sixty days, and within sixty days, we should have all of this complete, that we will do what is best for our city instead of saying, well, we have this and we got to do this? Why not let us do a moratorium? Let us investigate the possibilities as to what is best for all of the business, businesses, and not just for a couple of businesses or whatever? And then we will have a whole, uh, harmonious agreement that will suffice.
What, what type of issues are we going to have in the sixty-day period, though?
So every business that's due for a, a renewal that has a current license, they won't be able to get a new license until that's over. So if they don't have a license, the state won't allow themselves liquor until that license is renewed.
By how long?
Until it's renewed, so.
And, and what's the renewal timeframe is what I'm asking? How long does it normally take?
Thirty days.
If you get the, okay. Dani, Danielle had a, a question.
I'm just concerned about what it is we're actually extending. I'm not really, there, I think there are a lot of other things that are at play. I believe legal had been asked at one point to revise chapter ten and look at some other non-traditional ways of dispersing alcohol, um, that I think has also come into play as well. I think we were asked to look at delivery of alcohol. So I think there are some other things that are happening with chapter ten that are being worked on that I think this would all impact. And I, I don't know if a moratorium could happen before tomorrow. I believe it will be a two-reader, um, but that will defer to, um, Ms. Ewing as to the process of that. But I don't think we can have a moratorium not to issue any new licenses. Then that means that people who can't get a renewed license can't operate. I think it would have the adverse effect.
So let me ask you another question. Do we have the power to extend someone's license?
I don't think so. I think that is a...
Because does it have to be in compliance with the state?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you answer Councilman Green's question? Can you repeat that, Councilman Green?
Can, what is it that we can do to keep them in business until we get all of whatever balance?
It sounds like the state doesn't expire until September, is that right?
Yeah, the state, uh, then expires September for them getting their renewal. The issue we will run into is with your distributors will not deliver to any place that does, does not have a valid permit.
Right.
Along with the city and the state permit.
So when you give your permit, how, what's the period of time you give a permit?
So, uh, it's required that they turn the application in for renewal thirty days prior to the expiration date. So during that process, I go through to make sure if there are any ownership changes, any changes before I go through. any changes before I go conduct an inspection. So, that 30-day window gives me time to reach each business so they're not having to close their doors until they get their new license in hand.
So, let me understand. So, we have a business that is getting ready to lose their license because they're out of compliance for the separation, physical separation. When they apply for their license, what was the context then that would make them lose their license right now?
They are not in compliance with the physical separation. They have other business besides alcohol.
So, through this process, when they apply for their license package, I mean, hard liquor was not a part of that when they applied?
With certain stores, like I have a store in particular that when I went and did the initial inspection, it was nothing but hard liquor. Go back for renewal, they have shirts, clothes, milk, bread.
We're asking for forgiveness instead of permission. Right. So, they did this voluntarily?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll say this, while it looks like we could be rewarding bad behavior by doing it, I also think that this type of business is on trend right now. And I think that it might really solve our issues to either, one, just create the distinction that any place that's, just removing the separation for 21 and up so that they can sell all the things, or limit the separation to things under a certain square footage, like 15,000 square feet. Like, one of those two things could actually, like, cover a lot of it as far as the big-box stores, but it doesn't cover all because, like, your average Walgreens is still like a 15,000-square-foot store.
For a family dollar.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, is there, since I get that the gist of the council is to have more information, is there any way that we could do a moratorium? And I don't know how, we said it might take two weeks to do that, but a moratorium for maybe six months that liquor license won't be issued if there's a, if the issue is physical separation? And then that gives us time to look at it a little bit deeper. But basically, the moratorium would be?
Well, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I appreciate the position the police department's in, which is we have a law on the books.
Yeah.
That has been unevenly enforced, and the police chief and the officer responsible for this function of the city are coming to us and saying, your predecessors passed law that hasn't been enforced. We're committed to enforcing the law. Please either change the law or don't call us when your constituents say we've shut your businesses down. And I'm not going to call Chief Smith if a business gets shut down because it's violating physical separation if we don't change it, because that's the police department's job.
Six-month, anything, it's just adding up bureaucracy.
I'm with you.
So, Chief, how does this, these stores that's in question today, how did they become in non-compliance? What is it, when they got their license, they were doing different from what they're doing now?
Well, I can't exactly answer that question. I don't know over the course of time how they have changed their business profiles other than what was on their initial application.
Right.
As he said earlier, you know, we inspect periodically when we can. So, it would not be unimaginable to go in one day and there's a store for the liquor, and you go back again, and there's shirts and T-shirts and all that stuff. It would not be conceivable at all. But we need to be, need to be able to operate with one set of rules where one store to us is just like another store. You comply by the rules and you're all right with me, but just making a lot of distinctions is going to cause an issue for us.
I can understand that because my concern is, is that this is a store, whatever store that it is, that had a license to do this or that along the way, then dispersing became non-compliant.
Yes.
So, they started out being a liquor store, but now they liquor plus?
Whatever else?
Well, there's other things in the ordinance, in the law, that says that they should not be doing that. And I want to tell you, you know, at this point, we have some fine, outstanding businesses in our community. I firmly believe that the smaller stores, the stores that have been here for decades have been the lifeline of Shreveport and will continue to be. But on the same note, I do understand that future progress is going to take new creative ideas, new things to come into the market. But we need a set of rules that apply, one that applies for the other, not us having the, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Not look at everybody the same.
Right. So, Coach Glass, if this, I think it's one or two, if these two stores take whatever out of their store that they didn't start off with, would they be in compliance?
With physical separation.
Sir?
Yes, sir, with physical separation. But like as Chief said, it'll be some that, that, you know, we just can't get to at that point in time. It's over 700 businesses that deal alcohol in the city of Shreveport. So, as it comes across my desk for renewal, I'm going out to make sure you're in compliance. So, what was done before me, if you weren't in compliance when you did your initial, but now that I'm going out there to enforce what's on the books, now we have a conflict because everybody's not on the same sheet of music.
Okay. So, if we move the physical separation, then we would be on a level playing?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's not just the two?
No, it's plenty, it's a lot.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
I did want to say that if you, I don't know how many people have been to Walmart to purchase these things, but if you go to Walmart and you buy beer, if I'm not mistaken, no, I'm not mistaken, and if you go through the self-checkout, it alerts for that person that's standing out in the front that works at the store to come up and check your ID. No, it doesn't know who's standing there, but that person who's standing out at the front making sure that one is checking out properly, you have to come up, they have to come up and check your ID. It prompts them to check the ID because it's an alcohol beverage being checked out at that particular time. So, you just can't walk up, scan, and walk out the door. That's not how it works.
A lot of them too have, I've seen, like, in other towns in North Louisiana, that if you go to buy bourbon or vodka, they have like a cap on it. And when you go to checkout, they have a thing to unlock the cap. So, if you stole it, you had to bust the bottle open to get the liquor out.
Well, it's not in Walmart's interest or any other large store to allow wholesale theft of their expensive products. I just, I mean, I appreciate that concern, but I don't see that being a significant source of liquor providers.
Or our problem. If they, if we change the rule and they want to take that on, it's their responsibility to worry about their profits and losses.
We've got a law that says don't steal, too. That's not going to stop nobody from going back there stealing a pack of steaks. Let's be real, let's be real about it. It's not going to stop nobody from stealing steaks either. So, if they want to steal a pack of $60 steaks versus a $40 bottle of alcohol, I'm just being honest and real about it on both sides and playing the devil's advocate. People go steal, they want to steal, they go steal. And what you do about it, you just, you enforce the law and try to catch that person who's stealing. I'm not saying run out, run out behind them, but I'm just calling it being, just calling spade for spade.
The one thing that we can't really debunk out of everything that's been mentioned from the constituency today is the jobs, the threat of job loss. That's the only thing that we can't debunk from the side of everything that we've heard today as far as it being about protecting kids, theft, whatever. That's the one thing.
Well, I certainly believe, like I said, you know, our businesses that have endured the test of time here in Shreveport have flourished, have kept our people employed, that have really helped Shreveport to sustain and grow, should be commended. I'm so proud of them. And on the same note, I think we should consistently encourage new growth and development here within our community, which means new businesses, and do everything to try to encourage both. Absolutely.
So, Chief, my, my question is this. If we approve 90 on tomorrow, it will help you all to do your job?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we don't, can you approve temporary permits?
We're going to continue to do our job and enforce the law to the fullest.
But in this case, what I'm asking is?
Yes.
Can we do temporary permits, or is that applicable or not?
See, that was the question I was posing to the city attorney. Could, in fact, you as a council vote to, I don't know, not suspend, but give 30 days temporary for those who may be expiring within the next 30 days to allow us to do the research, to bring back the like you want? Because as you said, the state's permit doesn't expire until September, so we've got a month before we've got to, you know, eat out of the plate or be hungry one way or the other.
So, it doesn't have to be voted on tomorrow? Can it be postponed while we, while I do the necessary research and find what the answer to that question is?
With the renewal, we have the option, if it's turned in and on time, we have a window to process it, to where they may operate under the old one until the new one's approved.
30 days, right?
Yes.
30 days.
Just one last question.
But with, soon as the city's application is invalid, the state's applicant, the state's permits becomes invalid.
One quick question. So, today, without doing homework like we ask, would y'all, would it make your job easier without physical separation? Just all the way across the board?
I can't answer that.
I think that it probably, it probably would.
Mr. Clark?
We wouldn't be at the point where we are right now if that was the case.
Would it make your job easier if physical separation was gone all the way?
Coach Glass, Bradley, have y'all ever done temporary permits before?
Uh, no, sir. But it is in the ordinance for, the chief has the power to...
On Title 10?
Yes.
Mr. Clark has done a study. Mr. Clark has completed a study for the MBC, and we don't have it yet, but I'd love to hear what that study concluded about this issue.
You have to understand that physical separation was Chapter 10, and we did not delve into Chapter 10. We worked in conjunction with the AV office, getting input from them as we dealt with determining locations where liquor stores were appropriate. We had found that it was a very difficult task for the MPC board and the city council to accept because they would have constituency, as we're talking today, constituencies screaming, hollering about a liquor, we don't need another liquor store in our neighborhood, we don't need a liquor store in this particular location. So, that's what caused us to embark upon the study. And what we were able to do without giving you a long dissertation was we determined where liquor stores would be appropriate based on certain use standards of spacing between existing liquor stores, spacing between residential zone districts, and those type of things. And we started out where liquor stores were only a use by right in one district, and we found with those standards, we could allow for liquor stores to be a use by right in six to eight districts, but they would have to meet those spacing requirements. We also looked at delivery services. We had an application for the delivery service that was denied, and there would be no liquor sales at the location. It would be strictly delivery services, but we had to make that a use in the UDC in order for the police to allow for liquor to be delivered. So, these were the type of things that we were looking at. But I just wanted to stress that physical separation has no impact upon us. The only thing it has upon us is our ability to promote development within the city.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make this my last comment. I think I understand your concern about precipitous action because this is a significant change to the way we've regulated liquor in the city. An intermediate step that we could take tomorrow without really changing the status quo other than to protect existing businesses would be to eliminate physical separation for stores that limit admission to people who are 21 or older. And we can always, in two weeks or a month, or at any point, we can come back and say everybody can sell liquor everywhere. But that's something that addresses all these stores that are out of compliance, but doesn't preclude our deciding, you know what, we don't want to expand it to brochures and Walmart and drugstores. And we can, we can do that at any point, but we don't have to do it tomorrow to solve the problem that has motivated this legislation come before the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess my only concern is too, is just still down the road, what does it open ourselves up to? And what I want to understand that part. Does it already have an existing store within the area that is selling just wine and beer? They have that opportunity to go over and apply and then sell hard liquor as well?
Well, we have Councilman Bowman mentioned buying liquor at a gas station in South Louisiana. You can't do that here because we have a rule that if you sell gas, you can't sell liquor. But, I mean, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. It makes sense to think about the implications of what we're doing, but this small change of saying, if you limit people to 21 to come in your store, you can sell chips and T-shirts, that doesn't, I just don't think that moves a needle in a negative direction.
And this doesn't remove our ability to adjudicate who gets liquor licenses. We still have the ability to fight those things once the moratorium from the MPC lifts. We're not, we're not really pushing that control.
So, we can eliminate the physical separation?
And that'll solve it as far as today's concerned?
For 21.
And 21, but then?
But then we, if we can come back and if we want to try Walmart and grocery stores and drugstores, we can have that conversation later, or you and my successor again.
Keep that can, kick it, kick it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
But while they're up here, can I ask them, don't leave yet. I want to ask you something regarding the gentleman's questions that he had regarding ours. And if he can get those particular questions answered of what is the, what is the impact of what it is that you see if everybody is on an even playing field versus not? What is it that we're seeing within the city? So, I don't want him to leave without getting his questions answered.
Sir, would you come, would you come back up?
On hours of operation?
And ask those questions? The questions that you asked?
The question is, is it, how is it going to impact Shreveport and the, and the police force if we allow everybody to shut down outside of, south of I-20 and allow downtown to operate till 6:00 a.m.? That's the question. Is that going to alleviate crime? There was three, four, several people shot three weeks ago right outside downtown in the middle of the night. Collectively, I could probably get, I don't know, 10 or 15 bars and individuals, and we could probably compile all those, and there wasn't five people shot in the last year. So, maybe there's a handful here and stuff like that, but obviously, we're seeing a pattern downtown, and they're trying to make provisions for that. Once again, the question is, is if, is it fair for me to operate less operating hours and allow me to push my patrons downtown and put them in peril?
His concerns were if everybody's going downtown, which they are, because everybody that leaves Bojor at 2:00 a.m. when everything closes migrates to Shreveport because we're open till wee hours of the morning. So, that is an influx on people coming from Bojor, leaving bars to come to Shreveport. to come to Shreveport to partake.
So, so Chief, what's the advantage of closing some at two and letting others be open until three or six or whatever? How balanced would it be if, if we say everybody closed at the same time? If you're gonna, if you're gonna close them at two o'clock, everybody close at two. If you're gonna close at three, everybody close. If you're gonna close at four, everybody close at four. Whereas I heard the gentleman say, you know, you, you close these at two, and then those that's already tipsy drive over here downtown to get more tipsy, then that puts, to me, put more burden on you all, whereas you got to go everywhere. But if everybody was on the, if we close at six, we close at six. If we close at three, we close at three. So tell me, what's the time, what's, what, what's your view on, on the time?
Optimal, I believe, would be, uh, everyone closing at the same time, early. Go home. But obviously, that, that ain't the case, and as you said, the longer, uh, people allow to, uh, party, enjoy themselves, the, the greater the chances are that something will happen. If you, and he's exactly right, if you close south of I-20 earlier and leave north of I-20 as it is, exactly right, people are gonna come back, come back this way. And that'd probably be more chaotic than anything else, 'cause now you're having thousands of people in a much smaller area. Uh, you know, for me, for the police department, things would be, uh, contained a lot greater, but just with, with larger crowds. I don't know what the win is. Everybody close early, go home, go get a bite to eat or something, but stop consuming spirits. I remember, uh, earlier, uh, in my youthful days, I worked at a restaurant, Denny's on Mac House Drive, uh, all night long. Their greatest influx of business was at two o'clock. From two to six o'clock, it would be waiting room only. People wasn't ready to go home, go to sleep, but they definitely was hungry. Uh, but now, I, I don't know what's going on. I don't, I doubt if there's that many restaurants that's open all, all night before.
So you're saying that every place downtown that wants to stay open till six, you just start serving breakfast?
Why not? Why not? But, you know, the more people that's gonna come down here, the more chances are to have trouble. I just know south of I-20, where there's more people that live in homes, you know, I'm not talking about apartments or townhomes, that actually live in homes. Uh, they are really frustrated by the large amount of traffic, uh, the noise that it brings to the neighborhood. There's still some awesome, a lot of people that live south of I-20. And, uh, this really affects them. It really does.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
We, uh, we have a very important announcement that we'd like to make. Councilwoman Taylor's gonna read it about the Mavericks.
Tomorrow, the city will be recognizing the Shreveport Mavericks with Hot Diggity Dog. The Mavericks won the twenty, twenty-two TBL championship. And so we wanna join the city of Shreveport, along with the parish and the fans, for a fast break of hot dogs, soft drinks, snow cones, and ice cream. I scream, you scream, we all scream for the champion team. So we want to make sure that we, um, give the Mavericks a celebration. It's gonna be tomorrow, um, starting at eleven-thirty. Um, there's gonna be a march of the Mavericks at eleven forty-five and twelve noon, the cheer station, uh, cheer of champions. I will be at Central Arts Station tomorrow at eleven-thirty, starting at eleven-thirty.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of.
Um, we have no property standards. ABO appeals to consider today. Uh, we will have appeals on Case twenty-two dash nine, uh, BAC to, uh, to consider tomorrow. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are no other appeals.
Are there any reports from office or boards committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
Yes, we received appointment letters for Ms. Kristen Brown and Audra S. Reed to the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Agency, and that will be subject to confirmation on July twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Executive sessions, there are none. There's nothing else. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.